We had an administrative review that I don't see Ms. Robbins here.
No.
So I'm gonna postpone that for a couple of minutes.
I don't think she's coming.
Oh, we just need to, we just need to sign the agreement.
Yes, and I have, she needs it in triplicate. And if you guys can just, you can do it now or later. I have the page tapped out and Chair signs the top. Everybody else just needs to sign.
Do it anytime, right?
Anytime.
You can do it at the end anyway, so.
Okay.
Should we do it at the end?
Yeah.
Do you wanna leave it here?
I'm gonna leave it here.
Yep.
The first hearing tonight is 361 Littleton Road. John Wickens is seeking variances under 195-9 conformity to move a lot line which will leave a pre-existing non-conforming lot more non-conforming. The applicant requests relief from the minimum lot area, frontage and width, and any other relief deemed necessary. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman.
We only have four.
I was just gonna say there are just four of you tonight. You're not expecting any others.
Here we go.
We are.
Yeah, he is. Okay.
Oh, wonderful.
And then there was five.
So we'll have five, you'll have the...
Full board.
Full board, yes.
If I may, just a submittal.
I'm trying to pull it up, Doug, and I'm having a hard time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm handing to you basically a summary of what I'm going to be talking about very quickly. And I know you have a big agenda, so I'll try to be brief. I don't think this is too complicated. So the, there's two existing houses. We're not adding any structures. We're not adding any, any structures of any kind. We're just switching some land from parcel A to parcel B. It's owned by the Wickens family. One lot, Lot A, I believe, is owned by John. Lot B is owned by five brothers and sisters. And what's happening is B1, which is a part of the land to the top, and you'll see it on the plan, it's about 10,000 square feet, is being transferred from Lot B to Lot A. Lot B1 has a garage on it. And it has to do with appraisal valuations and affordability, et cetera. And really, that's not relevant to your inquiry. What you care about is, there's no greater inconsistencies. The same non-conformities that exist today will continue to exist. They're not getting any worse. And because one lot is going to just be a little smaller, the other one's gonna be substantially larger. So I believe one lot is 27,000 square feet. That will increase to 37,000 square feet, become more conforming. The lot that was 20,000 square feet is gonna become 10,000 square feet. But other than that, there's no material difference. There's no change in use. There's no change in garages, structures, et cetera. It is what it is. No changes of access to the properties. Quite frankly, it's just a lot line adjustment. Technically, I didn't even think that we really needed to come before the board, but out of caution in case that when they go for financing, a bank, if I was doing the title, might raise a question about the fact that a parcel land got switched and it made it Lot B more non-conforming by being smaller. So I'd rather have the variance. The A&R plan was already approved by the planning board because they saw no issues with any of this anyway. So it's really just transferring from left pocket to right pocket.
And of course, everybody on parcel A, B, and B1 is on board.
Everybody's on board. The neighbors have not, the clients have spoken to them. None of the neighbors that I'm aware of are here tonight. They've all been positive about this. They understand it's a family transfer, intra-family transfer to accommodate one of the brothers buying out the other siblings.
Okay.
I mean, the use is still, it's an RB district lots, so they're, you know, the use is staying the same. I believe that one of the, I think both houses are, don't have the required setbacks, you know, 50 feet. I think they're 40 and 25. That's not changing, though. That stays the same. So we respectfully ask that you just allow the variance because it's not really any harmful effect to anybody in the neighborhood. There's no substantial derogation from the intent of the zoning bylaw. We had two non-conforming lots to begin with, and we continue to have two, two non-conforming lots at the end of the day.
So we're re-granting two or a special permit for parcel B's rear setback and a variance for parcel B1's rear setback?
I don't, I don't think you have any problems with the setbacks. The setbacks are fine from the rear.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
What is, is this an RSC?
RB.
What is RB?
What is RB?
Rear, rear yard setback is 30.
Is it 30?
I think we meet it on both counts.
The garage is 25 feet from the rear setback. Or that cons...
That would be the new.
That, that garage is existing?
That's existing.
So it had a special permit to be built.
Because the new rear setback would be 34.
All they're doing is moving lot lines. So technically...
Right, but we're creating a new lot line that that garage is non-conforming, which I realize the whole side is non-conforming.
But then, but parcel B, now, what was the rear setback from the garage of parcel B before the split?
That doesn't matter. It's...
They had a variance for that or a special permit.
I said it doesn't matter, never mind.
With all due respect. I'm being honest, I honestly don't think that this is a matter that requires a lot of action from the board because it's simply a lot line.
No, I would rather have it accurate than, you know, a further problem. So, so I guess the argument could be made that the 25-foot setback with the old lot line removed becomes a side setback to Chamberlain Road.
Because the other, that's true.
And that might be the intent. I know, I thought it was Mr. Flaherty had put this together. He's, he's pretty careful. So we have the 25-feet setback, and we consider that the side, which is reasonable. And then with an RB, we all need 30, so the house is 34, so that's fine.
The house is 34, that's correct.
And the lot area meant to be 40,000 is now 10,000.
Right, right, but the other lot...
Lot area was 20,542 originally.
So one lot was 27. One lot was 27. We're making that 37, which is almost exact conformity with the RB district.
The other one is more non-conforming.
Exactly, but we still, the end result is we had two non-conforming to begin with on area. We have two non-conforming with area at the end of the day.
Okay, so...
And I don't see any harmful derogation from the intent of the bylaw or any negative effect on any abutter.
What is the hardship for a variance?
The hardship for the variance in this instance would probably be that it's... Well, we have the uniqueness of the lots in terms of their size and their shapes. We have hardship in the sense that there's no other area that could be acquired from any other abutters, so there's no available land. Both of these lots were pre-zone adoption of 1955. So the only reason we're, we're before this board, quite frankly, again, I'm being extremely cautious with respect to a zoning question that could come up down the road. The A&R has already been approved by the planning board.
And actually, nothing is happening. I do, I do understand that.
Yeah. I believe you could actually issue it as a special permit. I don't think you need to issue it as a variance, but it's phrased either way.
Right, but the application is for a variance.
I believe it was published for variance and/or a special permit or other relief that might be...
Evan did specify it needed the variance.
Oh, Evan did, okay.
Technically, technically, it needed the variance.
Okay, then, then I'll, I'll live with Evan's interpretation.
Yeah, it's a special permit for not less, or not more than 20% reduction.
In law, in law size, right, so it is a variance.
Yeah.
Yes, it's the reduction of size, right.
This one would be for a second here.
So what are we calling the front? We calling this the front?
Yeah, that's what is up here.
I think the front is here on...
The front is Chamberlain Road in one lot.
Chamberlain, because this is the entrance would be the front.
Okay, this would be the front.
So this would be, that would be the side.
It's a simple reason, right?
Lot A is one Chamberlain, I believe. Lot B is 361 Littleton. That's their frontage.
So the, the address says that's the front as well.
Inconvenience, but...
So then what's this line here?
That would be, and again, it is a difficult lot shape, but that would be the rear.
So then, we're just basically saying that that's just what it is, or here to here?
We're not, we're not adjusting that.
Because before, that was the side, right?
Anything, that's staying that way even...
No, 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 I get that, but before, that was the side, right?
Right, that was approved, and it was, was it 1998 or something like that? There was a variance. That allowed it to be built.
You said, I'm sorry, when was this? These were established in what year, these lots?
I believe that the lots were carved out well before the adoption of zoning. I haven't run the full title on it. The clients initially submitted these materials. I came in at the end of the day.
Again, what was the reason for doing this?
One brother is buying out the other siblings in Lot B. By having the garage, it has to do with valuations and appraisals. If the garage stayed in, the purchase price among the other siblings goes up. Makes it harder, much harder to afford to buy them out. By having the garage linked with Lot A, it all works. The appraisals work. All the siblings are satisfied. They're gonna get their share. And as a de facto, the garage actually gets used by Lot A anyway, always has. So it's just really, this is a recognition of the reality that's on the ground. That's all I'm asking for.
And the driveway to the garage comes in off Chamberlain?
Yes, it does.
And it'll actually go over Lot B, Lot A now.
It kinda shows it's stuffed, but...
I believe that the board, the other departments had no comments to this as of yesterday afternoon when I checked.
I will, at this time, read in the letters. The Police Department at 361 Littleton Road have no comments. Center Water District at 361 Littleton Road has no comments. Board of Health at 361 Littleton Road has no comments. And Engineering at 361 Littleton Road have no comments.
Everything in the town is at 361 Littleton?
Every one of the letters is at 361. No, no, that was the, the address we're dealing with.
Oh, okay.
I just like to make sure I'm reading the right letter.
It's like...
As I have it on.
The house is dated 1936 per the assessment record.
So that would be after the advent of zoning.
38 was zoned.
And my letter's wrong.
Oh.
I had to, I typed the wrong number, 351, 361.
So 361 is correct.
361 is the correct address.
And that's what I read in, I think. I did. Five points off, Mr. House.
It's all right. I think I'll struggle through it.
I am gonna go into the audience and see if there are any comments or concerns regarding this application this evening. Seeing none, accept the motion.
Second the motion?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Questions or concerns from the board?
I guess as is my usual MO, I'm not really sold on the hardship, but that's just my standard. I mean, looking at the pre, the, or existing lot shape, it doesn't look... I mean, they do tail off at the top, but that doesn't seem to be causing a problem of hardship. So I don't, I don't see how we tie in lot shape and hardship to needing to split these to... Nothing is improved by changing the lot shape from a hardship point of view that I can see.
I know, I wonder about the future impact. Look, if you make that lot that tiny.
Are there any other lots in that vicinity or in that neighborhood remotely close to that size? Or is this gonna be the one that's going to be, I mean, are we in, are we...
In the RB...
Stay within the area as far as...
In the RB district, there's a number of lots that are of that size or smaller. You know, the, the real problem, and this is why we struggle with this in this community, is the RB district is applied to areas with requirements that just really don't meet the reality that's on the ground. So I'm asking the board to use its discretion with respect to the satisfaction of the, no substantial derogation from the intent of the bylaw, the fact that the lots are unique in size. And hardship is the hardship on the family members, and it's gonna force potentially a sale of property outside of the family. And that's, and that's because primarily, because we can't literally move 10,000 square feet with a garage that's already being used and has historically been used by the owner of Lot A. With all due respect, I, I, I don't understand why we struggle with these things.
So is the owner of Lot A offering to buy out his brother, basically? He's offering to buy...
He's offering to buy the Lot A, the B1 that's being transferred to him.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what's happening.
Aren't his siblings looking for them? Well, he's offering to buy his siblings out now.
But, but he can only afford the evaluation of parcel B.
Yeah, 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 I understand. That's why they're trying to chop off some land so he can buy it cheaper. So they can sell it to their brother cheaper, yeah.
We're trying to keep the property within the family.
So just so you're aware, the planning board at their meeting last night was again discussing these pre-existing non-conforming small lots. And one of their ways of handling it is to go back to that blue book that gives the zoning of when the house was built.
When it was established.
It started out with like a, I think it was either 5,000 or 7,000 square foot lot. So 10,000 back, 1,000 square foot lot back in 1936 would have been...
A double lot.
Fine, you know what I mean? But this is, this sort of thing they're trying to keep from coming to the board, you know, like the Westlands and all those, you know, 198 E2s that you guys see that are always...
There's a lot of them.
You know, so this one might fit into that category. The planning board might have a lot of questions.
This lot's never been split or modified since zoning before, right? Because...
No.
Well, no, it was because they cut off the lot for the brother.
88.
88.
88.
Yeah.
Where the variance.
So parcel A and parcel B were created from one lot in 88?
Yes, they were.
Because it says here...
They were, so they were split in half. So what we're effectively trying to do, what they're effectively trying to do is change what they did in 88 and split it a little bit more.
So we reduced a lot to make it two lots? So we cannot further reduce or subdivide?
You can always put that in the decision, of course.
But it's, that's what I'm saying, according to the code, it's already there.
Where is that?
What?
Under 195-9. B4. Any lot reduced under this section may not be further reduced or subdivided. That's why I was trying to figure out if it had been, a lot had been reduced, if this has already been reduced or subdivided once.
It's already been subdivided by the A&R, respectfully. I think that issue's...
Already a separate law.
That's done.
Yeah, that's not what's in front of us.
That's not what's before you. Yours is simply to grant relief to reflect what the actuality is now because there is an A&R lot or lots of record.
Right, but what Steve's bringing up is a valid point is, is we need clear articulation of what the reasons for the variance are. And some of the reasons that we're talking about aren't really reasons. And so we need to have a good, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
You know? I think we understand what we're trying to do, but it's...
My concern would be that you're not gonna get appealed here because none of the abutters are coming out. If, if it was appealed...
Well, not here.
Then that, then that decision would be...
Not here, but others can go back and look at decisions that we've made and come in with precedent, that type of thing.
Respectfully, they can't. And I'm sure if Paul was here, he would say the same thing. These are all factually unique pieces of property. Every piece of parcel of land is unique unto itself. That precedent argument that I've heard pressed by other people doesn't fly. Legally, it doesn't fly.
There is no precedent in the Board of Appeals because each is considered individually.
Each is unique. Absolutely, respectfully, Mark, that is just not...
But we can be argued, I mean, if... There are other things that have come up here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just don't think this is the one where strict application of the criteria is actually warranted.
Well, I, I think it is.
And I think, yeah...
It's just how we, how we word that.
Is this what she was talking about? Or my 195-10? No existing non-conforming lot should be changed in size or shape.
195-9.
195-10 seems...
I think it's page, I don't know how you look at the, like, on the bottom it says 195:12.4. And up there, top third, number four.
Yeah, B4.
Yeah.
I believe I cited...
But 195-10 is also...
I believe I cited...
Exactly.
Yeah.
In the, in the letter, the Giovanni case, which talks about dimensional variances based on things like lot area. And where, as long as the use is remaining consistent and there's no endangerment they use of, to the nearby properties, the courts have a very lenient interpretation of hardship and the applicability of that particular criteria in a variance. And that's what we're talking about here, is a dimensional variance of lot area. And I again remind you, of two existing non-conforming lots to begin with, so...
That's pretty clear.
Are you responding to 195-10?
I know, that's what I don't get.
So 195-10, can I read it?
Yeah.
Out loud, so everybody understands what we're talking about. So 195-10 reads, "Existing non-conforming lots. No existing non-conforming lot shall be changed in size or shape except through a public land taking a donation for road widening, drainage, or utility improvements, or except where otherwise permitted herein so as to increase the degree of non-conformity that presently exists."
And the way I'm, I'm saying, and the degree of non-conformity, both lots were already non-conforming, so we're making one...
It would be increasing the degree of non-conformity that presently exists.
And on the opposite hand, you're making the other lot substantially more conforming by making it 37,000.
No, I know, but you can't just throw out the fact that one is being made more non-conforming. Can't throw that out.
I, I'm not attempting to throw it out, I'm just saying, non-conforming is not performing.
We can't average it out, okay?
Well, we're not bound by the word, the verbiage here. It says no existing non-conforming. We're here to hear the appeal, but I do wanna understand how that...
Well, me too. I think that's what we're all saying.
Right. And again, too, once reduced, once this lot's been, maybe I need to further understand an A&R, because it says here, once a lot is reduced, it cannot be reduced again if they've already subdivided it once.
Except through a variance. So we, we can do this. We just have to decide if this is what we're going to do.
This is what people find to their...
Right, 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 right. No, I got, yeah.
That's why they're there because by the strict letter, they can't.
Can we see what the previous subdivision was before it was divided, or?
I would...
Doug has...
B1 was with B.
So I think they just made this line...
Oh, the whole thing.
Just split it, yeah, so it was that big triangle.
And then they put it into two.
The important thing is what it says, "or except where otherwise permitted herein."
Right.
So that's what we're dealing with.
Yes.
We, this is the, the code. And that's, when you, when you don't meet the code, you come to a...
That's the variance.
No, I get that, but we're still trying to go back and make sure we're okay. Now we're back saying, what's the rationale for the variance?
Or what exceptions are we making here? How many exceptions are we making?
I think the idea is to accommodate the family of five brothers, and one is gonna purchase...
And is that suitable?
Let's look that up, it's...
Right, is that, is that qualified for? I mean, that's, that's their goal. I don't think there's anything, they're not gonna tear this down and put a body or a structure. Nothing's gonna change, which is something to consider that all of this is, is almost semantics because nothing will change as far as structure, size, shape.
That's right, that's how I started off. There's not, practically speaking, there's not a single change to what is out there, reality-wise.
Being brothers, Lot B will probably still use the garage.
Yeah, that's not even in question.
Right, right.
Probably both use the garage.
Yeah, I agree with you totally. That's not even a question.
Thank you.
I mean, if this was a special permit or something, I'm all in.
It'd be easy.
Real quick, it's, I like where the end goal is...
Me too.
It's just the path to getting there via a variance that I don't, I don't feel like I have the leeway for, for a variance with the hardship.
As noted.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a very difficult lot regardless, whether, whether they...
It just doesn't play into the...
The reason.
You know, it's not like they're trying to build something, and, you know, that's where that always comes into play, or something there, like, or wetlands.
Tomorrow morning, whether this is approved or not, exactly what you see is exactly what's gonna be there. The ownership would change through, I guess, legal means. And it would allow one of the family members to continue living in the house, where they can't do that the way it's structured now. Seeing there's no effect, I'm not necessarily against that because it really, there is no effect. Nothing changes.
So is there any concern about like the future of the remade, that smaller lot that's gonna exist? So in the future, if that guy wants to build a garage, is that gonna create more need for variances and things like that?
There wouldn't be enough room to begin with, but they would have to come back before the board.
Yeah.
They're accepting that they've created a very limited lot.
Yeah.
So they come in and say, because of lot size, it's tiny, that, you know, then we get down that road.
Like, is that gonna create a future...
Well, I guess that would be a...
That would be at a future date.
Right, that's just what's gonna happen.
A separate thing, and if they sell it tomorrow and...
Yep.
Yeah.
Comes in in September, we say, hey, sorry, you bought a lot that was too small.
Evan's next door, too, he could come over. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing, you wouldn't buy something, oh, I thought I could.
Yeah.
You're buying a 10,000 square, of which there's many in town, many 10,000 square foot lots in town.
In the RB district.
In the RB especially, I think, yeah.
That was my point earlier, Brian. Certain areas of this town are zoned RB that have no reason to be zoned RB. And this is an exact situation during...
Back before, it was developed in the way that it was.
Especially these lots along 110. This is Littleton Road, it's his major thoroughfare.
A very old road. Well, I'm not sure what, what to do other than to see if someone would like to make a motion. Unless there are other questions, which we have time, so feel rushed. I just don't, I think what is happening is fairly clear.
Can you get Evan?
If I may, I would like to see if Mr. Bolansky could address some of the points that have been raised, because he met with these clients, and he's the one that's recommended a variance versus special permit. And I don't think he would have recommended...
He's next door.
I don't think he would have recommended that they go for a variance to have this outcome in question. You know, I personally would have phrased it as a special permit, and this would have been done in 30 seconds. So.
Guess what?
It's amazing how that happens.
Are your ears buzzing?
I'm sorry, so what's the question?
Maybe you could just give us your name and.
Yeah, could you, and your address, please?
We have to reopen the public hearing.
All right, well, thank you for inviting me, I was just next door. I am Evan Belansky, the Director of Community Development.
We're going to have to reopen the public hearing.
Reopening the hearing, okay.
I make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
I second.
Second, Mark, all in favor?
All right, now go.
So Evan Belansky, Director of Community Development.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I think we're talking about Chamberlain Road?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and it was an A and R plan? That the planning board endorsed, and they put their typical note, no determination as to zoning. So that's what leads the applicant to the zoning board, is that under zoning, in order to make this compliant, it requires, is it a variance that they're seeking?
They've applied for a variance, and the question is, can it be a special permit? Which, I'm not sure if we have the authority to grant a special permit if it hasn't been.
Well, one of them says that if it's a reduction of greater than 20%, then it's not a special permit, which may be what you were going by, I'm not sure.
So let's assume it requires a variance, which is the.
We're struggling with the hardship, that's the reason.
Understood, understood, understood. So this, in my, in my view, this is not a, not a typical application in front of the zoning board. Typically, when you see variances, it's for something that comes out like Glen Avenue, where there's a proponent in front of you who's trying to create a new building lot. And it's an undersized lot, something of that nature. Or they're trying to put a addition on a structure, and they're, they're charged with finding a hardship. My understanding on this application is that it's two existing structures, there's no, they're both under common ownership currently, it's a family situation. So for, for a lack of a better word, you're essentially, you're essentially being asked to, if, if the board determines that it needs a variance, you're, ideally, you would be able to find some sort of hardship. But at the end of the day, it's essentially a friendly variance based upon the unique factors that are, that are in front of you. Again, family ownership, common ownership, two lot, two structures on, on one lot, is that?
No, they're two, they're two on two lots, it's just that we're changing the land area.
The ownership of.
Ownership remains the same. Ownership remains the same, and if I recall, this is subject to a previous zoning board decision. So that, I think, was a special permit. So, you know, there may be, it may be a remedy here where you're modifying that special permit, as opposed to looking at this as needing a new variance.
Under 1958, more nonconform, taking an existing nonconforming lot and having a change to that lot.
Right, I think, I think, I think what's key for the board to understand is this is not your typical developer kind of driven.
I think we all clearly understand that there's no change to the property regardless.
Right, so it, so it may, it may be, I'm just talking, talking out loud at this point, that the strategy is, was it advertised as a special permit?
Variance.
Or a variance? So maybe, maybe the strategy here is that the board, the deems it's a modification of the previously approved special permit, assuming counsel thinks that that's a good approach, and then, and then vote accordingly. If for some reason, it turns out that that's not a proper approach, you come back and revisit the matter.
I think that would work.
So unless it is available, I have not seen the 1988 decision, is that available?
If I, if I can keep her party.
Would you like to continue, and we could organize this, or maybe?
Can we move it, can we just move it until I can find it on the registry of deeds?
Move to a different agenda item and then come back?
Bring another item, I'll see what I can coordinate in the next few minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Before you.
We got a motion to continue this till later in the evening.
A motion to continue, later down in the agenda.
Second, Evan, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, thank you.
I almost had it perfect, I said it'll be 25 minutes on this one, easy.
I thought it was going to get a little complex, though. Okay, our next hearing is 25 Mission Road, Jamie Elmore, for a special permit under 1958E2, to construct a 24 by 28 addition to the rear of the structure that is over the 30% allowable by right and any other relief that may be deemed necessary. Good evening.
Good evening. So pretty straightforward, I think. I purchased this house.
We just heard that.
He didn't start that way, did he?
Yes, he did.
He did.
I retract, can I start over? So the structure of the house is going to stay the same, I would like to put an addition off the back for a two-car garage with a, a room above. And that's pretty much it, it's, it's already pretty, as you can see, it's pretty tight up to the lot line, I believe that's quite nonconforming by today's standards.
So it's five foot one from the right-hand side now.
Right.
Your addition would be 16.4.
Right.
And the rear doesn't look like it's anywhere.
Lots of space to go back as well.
Where does the driveway come in?
The driveway will be to, as you're looking at it from the street, to the left of the, there's an existing driveway, which will be continued back.
That shed will be removed?
From Mission Road, yes.
Oh, okay. So between the house and the shed.
Uh, yeah, exactly, right, the shed will be removed.
Yeah.
So, okay, so the entrance is over, the entrance will be 29 Mission, facing 29 Mission, okay.
The entrance to the garage, correct, yes. Let's see, I spoke to the neighbors on either side, Jeff Miller, who just purchased, I think it's 23, he raised that house, and he's building a new colonial right next to it. And then on the other side is Robert Therion, Robert Moore Therion, I spoke to them, I did not get it in writing, but they, they had no objections, they thought it would actually, it's going to improve what they're seeing now. The house has been in pretty poor shape for some time, so I'm modernizing the entire house, the garage is just part of the scope of the project. And then I also found out that the neighbors I spoke to across the street are really not in Chelmsford. On the opposite side of the street, across the street, that's all Tingsborough, which.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. But they approved, for what, you know, for what that's worth. And in my, in my narrative, which I sent as an email to Colleen, there is an error in that, in the, you know, hi, Colleen, here's a quick narrative on the proposed project. It will be a 24 by 30-foot two-car garage addition off the back of the property, it will not be 24 by 30. That was something that was being thrown around early on when we were planning it, but it will be 24 by 28.
Okay, so it's less than advertised, that's fine.
I believe it was advertised at 24 by 28.
Yeah.
Oh, it was?
That's what's on the print.
Yeah.
I see, I see, okay. No further questions, I'm going to read the letters. No questions at this time. For 25 Mission Road, Bruce Harper has no concerns, the, where's it, North Chelmsford Water District, I guess? Not listed. For 25 Mission Road, the Board of Health has no comments. 25 Mission Road, the police have no comments. 25 Mission Road, the Fire Department has a letter. Dear members of the board, the office has reviewed the proposal for an addition at 25 Mission Road and finds the following. The entire home, existing and new construction, shall be equipped with life safety systems as required by 780 CMR 51, standard for new construction at the time of application for a building permit. The home shall have hardware, interconnected smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors in all required locations. Three copies of the plans that clearly show all required life safety devices shall be submitted to this office as part of the building permit review process. This office would approve of this addition with these conditions, I ask that the board make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully submitted, Dan Costoffus, Captain, Chelmsford Fire Department. Engineering has an attached letter. I think it's right underneath it here. Engineering notes, one, the proposed addition will be near or possibly over the existing sewer service. The applicant must contact the DPW Sewer Division to coordinate any necessary permits or actions to preserve or alter the sewer service. Two, a road opening permit may be required for work within the right of way, contact the DPW Highway Division for all necessary permits. Three, erosion control devices must retain the sediment on site, these must be installed prior to any work or demolition. Four, consideration should be made to install roof drain drywells. That's the end of the letter from the engineering. And that is the end of my letters. Any questions for the letters? This time I'm going to go in the audience and see if there's any comments for or against this project this evening. Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second by Evan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I motion to approve the special permit for 25 Mission Road.
With the letters?
With the, yes, with the letters as read.
Second by Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Any animus?
Thank you very much.
Our next hearing. This is open for me. Is 12 Spring Street for Lisa Tomano, for a special permit under 1958, to construct a farmer's porch that will increase the nonconformity on the front setback, and any other relief that may be deemed necessary. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you today?
I'm good, if I could have your name and address for the record.
It's Lisa Tomano at 12 Spring Street, North Chelmsford, Massachusetts.
Thank you. If your partner likes to speak, you could give me your name and address as well.
Dan Tomano at 12 Spring Street, North Chelmsford, Mass.
Thank you. Want to tell us a little bit what you have planned?
So we actually applied for two permits, one was for the interior, which is, is all cleared, but this one is exterior. We have an existing porch now that we want to redo, but within that, we want to change it to make it a wraparound porch. So right now, the closest it is, is 18.8, I believe, feet from the street. And with the proposed plan, it's going to push it out to the corner of being 15.5 feet. So it's basically three and a half feet closer to the street that we need it to be. And on the side of the porch.
Do we have a proposed plan?
A proposed plan?
Yeah, it's up in the corner.
It's in the corner of the.
The new one's in the corner.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, that becomes clear on that, okay.
So are you ripping out the closed-in porch that's on the house?
Uh, so they're going to redo the whole entire porch. They're not exceeding the distance from the original porch, they're just going to.
Taking it to the corner.
They're taking it to the corner, exactly.
I see. And opening it up, it should be a farmer's porch, because it looks like it's enclosed now.
Correct, yes, yes. Yep, and on that side, there is no one abutting us, but we have talked to the neighbors, and no one has any objections for us to.
So you're getting closer to Spring Street?
Onto the road, correct, yeah.
Any questions? I'll go to the letters. Regarding 12 Spring Street, the Fire Prevention has no comments. 12 Spring Street, the Board of Health has no comments. 12 Spring Street, the police have no comments. And I have a letter from Christopher Conde and Becky DeSilva Conde at 8 Holt Street. Dear zoning Board of Appeals members, we send this letter to you in support of our neighbors, Daniel and Lisa Tomano, who own reside at 12 Spring Street, North Chelmsford, Mass, and applying for a special permit. We support their request to build a wraparound porch to the exterior of their house, in addition to all the other components of their home renovation project. Bless you.
Bless you, sorry.
We strongly feel that the project will add great value and curb appeal to their property, and we have the same positive effect on our neighborhood as well. Given that the majority of lots in the neighborhood are already nonconforming, the town's current zoning bylaws, two of the town's current zoning bylaws, we don't believe this project will have any negative impact on our neighborhood or the town. Therefore, we kindly request that you consider this project for approval. Christopher Conde and Becky DeSilva Conde, 8 Holt Street. I have a letter from Engineering with notes, erosion control devices must retain the sediment on site, these must be installed prior to any work or demolition. I have a letter from Paul and Danielle Wigmore at 19 Holt Street. Dear sir and madam, we are writing this letter in support of Dan and Lisa Tomano, who have been friends of ours for the past five years. Dan and Lisa are kind, hardworking people and good neighbors. In our opinion, the wraparound porch they've conceived for their home would make a beautiful addition to the house without impacting adjacent homes. Sincerely, Paul and Danielle Wigmore, Wigmore, 19 Holt Street, North Chelmsford. Last letter. Suzanne, I'm going to goof this, Croshun.
Yeah, got it right. You did, good job.
There's hope. I live at 8 Spring Street, North Chelmsford, I am neighbors with the residents at 12 Spring Street. We are supportive of the addition of the porch that the residents, at that residence, and have no objections. That is the extent of my letters. No questions, I'll go into the audience and see if anyone would like to speak either in favor or opposition to this application. Seeing none, look for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second the motion to close.
Second by Jamie. All in favor?
I love me a farmer's porch, so I'm like.
Sounds like a motion.
You guys tell me what you see, do you see any problems? I want a farmer's porch myself, so.
Does that count as a motion?
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit for 25 Mission Road, or no, sorry, for 12 Spring Street. To construct a farmer's porch.
With regard to the letters attached, the letters.
With regard to the letters attached.
I second the motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Let me know when it's done so we can come look at it.
We can come hang out.
I don't know if we're allowed to hang out.
We can look at it, right? Farmer's porch.
Okay, our next. Application is 7 Needham Street.
What about 21 Sunset Avenue?
Oh, yeah, 21.
21 Sunset Avenue.
My file is out of, out of order. 21 Sunset Avenue, Mark and Stephanie sees for a special permit under 1958E, to construct a new second-floor addition converting the garage to living space, and will meet setbacks, but is over the 30% allowable by right, and any other relief that may be deemed necessary.
Good evening. Good evening, Mark sees 21 Sunset Ave, Chelmsford. For once in my life, speaking for my wife tonight, so who's home with the kids. But nonetheless, do we have the plot?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
I'm just slow tonight, sorry.
That's okay.
There you go.
So 21 Sunset, your classic Cape, there's a garage on the left-hand side, and then there is what used to be probably a porch that's now a fully closed-in, full room on the back there, attached to the deck. So our proposal is to take down both those structures there and put a two-story living space and a bedroom over that L-shaped section. We are going to go back on that side where the deck is there, about two feet, which is still, I believe, in compliance. And then we are going to go forward from the garage side, about 10 feet, but not further to the street than the house currently is, and we're going no closer to. And we're going no closer to our neighbor Marvin McMillan than we currently are.
So, you're building up on a pre-existing structure, right?
Yes.
Are you changing your, but you're gonna change your footprint?
Not technically.
The only change in the footprint is.
The porch.
Is this section right there? That little square?
Okay, so that, so you are gonna be changing the footprint?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I was trying to.
We're not increasing the nonconformity.
Right. But because they're changing the footprint over, okay, okay.
We're increasing the existing nonconformity. Okay.
It's just over the 30%.
Brian, this one's typically the 198-8E2, because he's not changing anything in its square footage that really brought him here. If he was within the small.
Because he didn't.
Yeah.
If he hadn't changed the footprint, he wouldn't be here.
Didn't decrease setbacks.
Right. If he wasn't, if he wasn't changing the footprint under the new guidance, he wouldn't be.
That's what I wanted to make sure. Okay.
That's what I thought.
That's what brought him here.
Yep, that's what I thought. Okay. We're good.
Okay, so we're good. I'm gonna read the letters. Regarding 21 Sunset Ave, the board of health has no comments. 21 Sunset Ave, the police have no comments. On 21 Sunset Ave, the fire department has submitted a letter. Dear members of the board, this office has reviewed the proposal for an addition at 21 Sunset Ave and finds the following. The entire home, existing and new construction, shall be equipped with life safety systems as required by 780 CMR 51, standard for new construction, at the time of application for a building permit. The home shall have hardwired interconnected smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors in all required locations. Three copies of the plans that clearly show all required life safety devices shall be submitted to this office as part of the building permit plan review process. This office would approve of this addition with these conditions, and I ask that the board make this letter part of their approval process. Respectfully submitted, Dan Costoffas, Captain, Chelmsford Fire Department. I have a letter from engineering with notes. A road opening permit will be required for work within the town's right-of-way. Special attention will be required for the sidewalk. I don't know what that means. Erosion control, why not, I don't think you're going out to the street. You have sewer already, right? Erosion control devices must retain the sediment on site. These must be installed prior to any work or demolition. That is the end of my letters.
I have letters from my neighbors specifically.
If you'd like to submit them, I'll leave those to.
Mr. McMillan, Michael and Alexis Treat, Tricia McConville, and Margaret and Thomas Martin, all of who will basically see this on a daily basis. They're all in support of the draft plot plan we have, as well as the building plan we have drafted.
They're duplicate letters. Would, you like me to read one and read the?
They're all the same wording.
Yeah, just.
Read one, sign by.
Okay, so I have, to whom it may concern. Mark and Stephanie Sees at 21 Sunset Ave, have shared their home addition plans drafted by Mike Shriver dated 1/21/2019, and the plot plan drawn by PM Flaherty dated 2/3/2019. I have no issue with them moving forward with the project. Kevin and Mackenzie Wells of 26, it doesn't give their address. Oh, 26 Sunset Ave. Michael and Cheryl Perry of 24 Sunset Ave. Darlene and Lawrence Carmoly of 17 Sunset Ave. Stephen and Deborah Petka of 25 Sunset Ave. Thomas and Margaret Martin of 1 Francis Street. Michael and Alexis Treat of 19 Sunset Ave. Marvin McMillan of 23 Sunset Ave. And Tricia McConville of 2 Woodbine Street. This is a great idea, incidentally.
Colleen's idea. I'll talk to her on Tuesday.
Always helpful to know that your neighbors are in support of this when making a decision. So, that is the end of my letters. If anyone in the audience would like to comment either in favor or in opposition to this application, please step to the podium.
I'd like to motion to close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can second next. Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the special permit for the addition on 21 Sunset. Am I in the right one?
Yes.
With, including all the letters and drawings that were submitted with the application.
I second the motion.
Second, I do. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck with it.
Good luck with it.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Point out that our audience participation is at an all-time low.
And, and there was quite a crowd. I kept waiting for someone to have.
It's just the agenda items.
I feel like that's a good thing, though, right?
Yeah, I'm not complaining at all.
Well, you don't know how many people watch it at home, but they don't get to test it. Now, we are ready for 7 Needham Street. Derek. How do you pronounce your last name, sir? I'm sorry.
Ilg.
Ilg, okay, thank you.
I-L-G, yeah, kinda looks funny. It kinda looks like two I's or two L's.
Identical, yeah.
Yeah, it looks the same. Ilg.
Ilg.
Good evening, thank you. Derek Ilg, so 7 Needham Street, North Chelmsford.
And I'm just gonna read this, and, and we'll be ready for you.
Okay, great.
7 Needham Street, Derek Ilg, for a special permit under 195-8E2 to construct a two-car garage and in addition to the rear of the structure that will meet the rear setback and any other relief that may be deemed necessary. Okay, should I tell us a little about what you have planned?
Sure. So, um. It's a pretty big, major renovation. We've been living there for about nine years. We have five children, couple of which are in the school system, couple more to come. We wanted to stay in the town. We like the neighborhood. We like the neighbors. And kinda decided on what can we do? Either we stay or we move, and we decided we wanted to stay. And so, we're looking to create two new bedrooms that meet the standards for bedrooms. We're looking to redo a whole new kitchen, add a couple bathrooms. We're pretty much living like people in the 30s. We have seven people with one bathroom. And it's pretty tight quarters. And so, um. We've been blessed with a very generous gift, and so, we're looking to do a major renovation to accommodate my family.
Excellent.
So that we can stay in the town and raise our children in the town.
I'm confused by the, it will meet the rear setback. Just for starters. Why is that?
If you're meeting where, why would you need, what is the relief?
My understanding is that we had to come before the board because of.
That's what it looks like.
Square footage, right? The law is that if you go.
Just percentage, yeah. I didn't understand why it said that.
The garage is new to the footprint.
Okay, I just, that threw me off when I read that, because that's all I see. They're going from 15 to 16 point something on the percentage, and other than that, they're conforming.
Yeah, my understanding is that it's just that if you go above 30%, you have to come before the board for.
Okay.
Square footage percentage, and that's why we're here.
So, what he has in the proposed here is 21 existing, 36 to the new, but.
Right, but it's just approving, yeah.
There's only the one plan.
I thought it was up there, but you're welcome to. I think there might be a couple here. It's, it's really crowded, so it's not gonna be a lot.
Yeah, I know. I was kinda surprised when I saw that. I go, there's a lot written on there.
Yeah, and then the.
It doesn't usually look like that.
Handy, but not, not to us, really, but it just crowds it up.
Yeah.
I, I think I understand what it is now. It's just, it was definitely a little confusing.
I mean, I could try to explain a little bit more if you need to.
So, basically, we're looking at the, the extension of area, which, is that coming up this fall? The.
We're hoping to, yes.
We're, we're working on that.
Where is.
You're gonna be allowed to double the size of your.
That's why.
You'll be able to put a second floor on without.
They're discussing getting rid of the sliding scale altogether.
Yeah, I'd like to see that before.
As long as you don't, as long as you don't affect the setbacks, right, you should be.
So, we've taken the measures to, to, to really review just going over and not increasing the footprint and approving it in office as to not tie up the board. We're looking at other options as well to get rid of that sliding scale.
Streamline.
Or streamline a process that makes it a little easier.
There's the blue book idea that go back, go back to when the house was built, and then there's new zoning they're thinking of, so it's still in the discussion.
I remember when it was on the counter, when you'd come in, Tony Zagsus.
You know what's funny?
And he'd say, where's the house? What's his, he'd open it up to that date, and that was what you got.
So, we're, we're plagued in Chelmsford with this exact problem, where, where people are, family sizes are increasing and in-laws, you know, being taken care of by families. And we have certain zoning in place to allow that. And even in that case, we're increasing it by the non-allowable factors.
We tried to, I think it was tighter than even Bill Rickerhand back when it went in. It was, it was.
Very tight margins, very tight margins.
One person, I think, was 700 feet, is that correct? One, one person can do that very well, but when you put two people in there, and a lot of times, they went separate areas. It's challenging.
With equipment, you know, especially if it's an elderly.
Right, and today's, today's bathrooms are much larger, doorways are wider, there's wheelchairs, there's all kinds of things.
Any cap accessibility, that's a big, big factor right there.
Yep. Okay, good, good to have a clear thought on that. I'm gonna read the letters. Everybody got a football game tonight? What's going on?
I'm sure he'd like to just.
7 Needham Street. Engineering has notes. Consideration should be made to install roof drain drywells. Erosion control devices must retain the sediment on site. These must be installed prior to any work or demolition. A road opening permit may be required for work within the right-of-way. Contact the DPW Highway Division for all necessary permits. And my only other letter is from the police department with no comments. I'm gonna open this up to the audience to see if there are any questions or concerns regarding this application this evening? Ma'am, if you had approached the podium, your name and address? Or ma'am and sir, I don't know, together?
I'm Dorinda Toppin from 1 Kiberg Drive, and my husband?
Ray Peterson, 1 Kiberg Drive.
Yes, and we're, um, our driveway inn is where the back of their house is, and we really hope you'll approve it. They're an awesome family. There's a big yard. They've got little kids. We're so happy, and they're the best neighbors, so.
Thank you for taking the time tonight.
Continue to be that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other concerns or comments? Seeing none?
Like a motion to close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
You seconded that, Jamie?
Me.
Nope.
Oh, you did. Sorry.
Working together.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit under 195-8E2 for 7 Needham Street with regard to the letters presented.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Thank you so much.
Enjoy.
Colleen's been great.
She is great.
Don't lie.
Public hearing closed.
Our next hearing is 3 Murray Hill Road. Donald and Casey Casey for a special permit under 195-8E2 to construct a 32-by-28 addition and a 16-by-22 deck, and will not meet the side setback and is over the 30% allowable by right and any other relief that may be deemed necessary. Good evening.
How are you? Eric Murray Murray, Home and Purvent. This is the homeowner, Don Casey, 3 Murray Hill Road.
Good evening.
Murray Murray, I'm Murray Murray.
Eric Murray Murray Hill Road. I have to, I have to do this.
There's your name on it.
Okay.
Literally.
We're already nonconforming, increasing nonconformity, right? Thank you.
31.3. Did you give it us that? No, I didn't.
Murray Murray, I'm Murray Murray. Stop.
One thing I did miss on the, this is for a limited accessory apartment as well.
Oh. Is that number three?
Number three? What do you mean?
No, number three is the existing home.
That's the existing, so it's the shaded, that's for a limited accessory?
Yes.
What's the square footage on?
Is that advertised, Colleen?
I don't even, no. It is captured under the, and any other relief necessary. I missed that one.
The square footage of the addition is 873.6.
So, you need a. 873, no, I need a.
Twenty, I think total is 2856 with existing house. We had initially, had it written up for, you know, 24, 26, but we're trying to get ADA compliant with wider door openings and stairways, so we, we grew it to 32 by.
Did you include the stairway in your calculations?
In that calculation, yes, I did.
That can be removed.
Yeah, 3 by.
And what is it, closets as well, is that right?
On the stairways. Okay, so we can certainly, we'd be certainly closer to the 750. We don't have an actual floor plan for it yet, because we didn't wanna, let the, you know.
You have an envelope at this point.
Yes, exactly. We have, we have plans being drawn currently, so.
750? Say 113 feet away, a regular stairway is like 120, so you should be fine.
Be close, yeah. We're gonna have a walk-in closet.
I think, were it approved, we could do it contingent upon.
Yeah.
Floor plan.
That equals a qualified 750 feet.
And just for your awareness, there, there is some code changing now for ADA compliance that automatically through any zoning, you would be able to add 10% for ADA compliance.
Oh, okay.
So, it's coming through the building.
Really get to 7.
Yeah, right, so.
Yeah.
825.
Yeah, 825, so yeah, you'll certainly qualify with just the removal of the stairway, which is not the ADA.
That, that would, we would have to make sure that the entire limited accessory apartment complied to ADA, so we'd have to have an ADA kitchen, ADA bathroom to fall under that standard.
To get the 10%.
Correct.
Ah, I got you. I still don't think we'll need it with that extra 10%. I think we'll be under it with the walk-in closet and stairwell.
Right, well, you haven't drawn it yet, and your, your envelope could shrink, should it have to.
Right.
But it doesn't sound like you, you would have to. It sounded like you would make.
Yeah, it's gonna be right on. We can make it so that it'll fit at 750.
Okay, well, I'm gonna take the rest of the night and read these letters.
There's a paperclip on the ones you really don't need to read.
So, how does that work if they're submitted? I don't have to read them?
You can, the board can, well, look them over, and you can ask a board member to make a motion to waive the reading.
Okay. Right, that's what I thought was coming in. All right, so anyways. Regarding 3 Murray Hill Road, the police have no comments. I would like to waive the reading of the fire department, fire prevention regarding the 911 address and the life safety devices that has been entered ad nauseam.
Okay, so that is acknowledging the LIA.
Yes.
That's all I care about.
It ignored, yep, it ignored just the, it should, you have the instructions for the dual address.
Clear on everything else.
I'd like to waive the reading of the engineering notes. There are three roof drains, erosion, and, and road opening permit. This is the second.
I reprinted a bunch. I may not have.
Yeah, so there's, there's a duplicate of that. We don't need to worry about that.
Read it twice.
The board of health at 3 Murray Hill Road has no comments. Donald and Casey Casey have written a little letter, and I think I will read. Regarding our application to build in addition to our house at 3 Murray Hill Road with an accessory apartment, which will be occupied by Casey Casey's parents, received a letter from the abutment. Received a letter from the abutment at sixty Dalton Road requesting that we remove portions of our fence that are currently lie within their property within thirty days by August third, based on the receipt of the letter on July third. This letter serves as our intent to address any concerns regarding this fence. So it's just, it was put on the wrong side of the property line, basically? Yeah.
Yeah, the, the property line sort of, it's weird how the property line goes. If you were to look at the property, there's all sorts of overgrown area between their house and this random corner of what looks like my yard. And we did the fence in such a way that it makes sense with the yard, so we had an agreement written with them to allow the fence to be there, and they're asking for it to be removed now.
Okay, okay, so it's just things changed?
Yeah.
All right, so you're, you're in agree, you've signed an agreement to move the fence as they requested?
Well, I've, we had an agreement years ago to put the fence where it is. They've sent me a letter asking to remove it within thirty days. We're intending to remove it as part of the project, but we're proposing a longer timeline so we can utilize our contractor when he's out there for site prep work anyway.
That's sort of a private matter.
Yeah, I don't think I'd actually concern myself.
Was there anything behind the thirty days that you know of? Was that arbitrary?
In, in the original agreement, we had, we had a list of four conditions for to terminate our agreement, and that they would give us written notice within thirty days. I think that's where they were coming from. But none of the four termination clauses have actually been met, which would be them developing their land, us selling our land, them selling their land, or a new written agreement.
So they're asking it be removed, but, but it doesn't meet the termination?
It doesn't meet the, the agreement that we had, but I'm still willing to remove it now since we're doing work anyway.
Okay. And this is the letter actually requesting that the fence be removed in thirty days or sooner, as discussed.
That one is the agreement. Those are all the pictures of the fence, just pictures.
Yeah, I don't know, three D's, I don't know.
It was submitted, so I had to put it in the record.
Guess I'll pass them down, because someone spent an inordinate amount of time drawing little arrows and dotted circles.
Set of plans for a fence?
Fences really bother people. Funny, it all works.
It's not even a, a six-foot stockhead or anything, huh? It's just a thing.
The, the, the part of the fence is a six-foot high chain link.
Oh, chain link, okay.
Yeah, because there's a, there's a rock wall, and it steps lower behind the rock wall, so the chain link was taller to keep the dogs from jumping in.
Yeah.
So what type of timeframe would you be looking at for removal?
Whatever the beginning of the construction thing would be.
Okay, because that'll end up on my desk.
Yes.
Forget I get it in line now.
Yeah, I've talked to Eric, and we've determined that it'll be the first thing that we do when, when the project starts.
It's just gonna be on your property.
Yeah, portions of the fence will remain that are within the property line. We've already had a surveyor come out to mark the line, so we can be sure which portions need to be removed.
Okay. This is the actual agreement, which I do not feel concerns this.
It's a nice looking fence.
Yeah. Not a fence connoisseur, but I do.
Farmer's porch is my thing today.
That's a good one.
I also have a letter from Janet and Don Dubner, is that correct?
And Dan Dubner.
Dubner?
Yeah, Dubner, you know.
Dear Don and Casey, we have received the zoning Board of Appeals legal notice that you have applied for a special permit and a variance to put in addition and a deck onto your house. We'll be out of town when the meeting is held. We want you to know we have no objections to your request. If it will be helpful, please share this letter with the ZBA. Please feel free to call if you have any questions. Have a happy Fourth of July.
Oh.
All right, that was so nice. Okay, I'm gonna go into the audience and see if there's any questions or concerns regarding this application. Seeing none?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Seconded by Steve. All in favor? Yeah, you had to work at that one.
So to be clear, all we're dealing with is the over thirty percent.
Uh, yeah, all the setbacks appear to be, uh.
Oh, it says it won't meet side.
Oh, and, and the in-law.
The LAA.
Yeah, it's twenty-three nine on the side.
Yeah, twenty-three nine. Oh, just missing.
That's existing, right?
I thought it was already nine.
It's, it's on the left there in that image, I think, to the deck.
Yeah, the right side elevation comes into it by about seven feet. And that's just a proposed deck. We just kind of wanted some flexibility there in case we want to do some sort of an egress door off the end of it with the deck. So I just want the whole length, say if it's four by four landing with a set of stairs going down off the mast of the bedroom, I was thinking maybe, but like I said, we don't have a floor plan, so not knowing, I just, we pencil that in.
Is that a side setback at twenty-five?
Mm-hmm. So it was, oh, now we're making it nonconforming.
I thought.
Yeah.
We are, we are getting a special permit, though, not a variance.
Yep.
Is that a four-foot deck at this point?
No, it's drawn as an eight by twenty-seven point three, I think. That's to be determined. We don't know exactly what we're gonna do there yet. The idea was the hall's gonna be down in the middle, it could be like a four by four, or six by six landing with a four, four-foot set of stairs going down to the front. It's, um, we don't know what the floor plan's gonna bring yet.
Yeah, I had him draw it wider. Had requested there to not be a large set of staircases, so I had him draw it wider in case we needed to kind of do a switch.
Serpentine, yeah.
So four and four, you know, down six steps landing and then.
I mean, I don't think it would be an issue either way, but if you guys wanted to make it something like six foot three as opposed to eight foot, we wouldn't need to grant the variance on the, on the side lot. Should be preferable, but it's not the end of the world. It's a special permit, you don't need a hardship to do that. It doesn't seem that it would be overly invasive, should you say you want the eight feet, but I, you know. You tell me.
It would hold things up, or what do you, I mean?
Honestly, probably neither way. I mean, I'm, I'm a single vote of, of five, and I wouldn't object either way. I just think it would be better if we didn't have the special permit for that. It's a, it's a foot nine inches that you'd be shaving off it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, from a, from a building standpoint, you're gonna have a four-foot landing coming out off the, off the door, then you're gonna have a set of stairs going down the back three feet, then you have to have a landing again, which is gonna be.
So in this space here, you're gonna have a stairway and a landing?
Two landings, well, a landing at the top, and then a set of, a short set of stairs, then a landing, and then that's reverse direction, so.
Going rearward?
Uh, that's, you can go down the back, so say if it come out the middle of that gable end right there, down the back six steps, landing, and then reverse direction and go down towards the front again. So that was kind of the idea, that we'd have a winding staircase.
Oh, so that, yeah.
You'd use up all the eight feet with a wall, an exterior wall and a demising partition, or even a rail, so.
Right.
Like I said, it wasn't the end of the world anyways, it's a special permit, it's not, uh.
Where are the doorways, the house and so forth?
The existing house, egress doors, um. And right now, this middle section right here is a, is a, is an unconditioned space, it's a screen porch. That's gonna be a common area. We're talking about there being an egress door right here on the back deck, and then this is gonna be a set of stairs going down here, there's a two-car garage under, so that set of stairs is gonna share the two-car garage under.
So you're not adding a second.
That's two egress.
You're not adding a second doorway to the, to the Murray Hill side?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Well, there's gonna be one down here in the front, it's gonna be at the garage. You're asking about the existing house? We talked about the side, that's one of the reasons that this staircase would be here, as an egress.
To have an outside entrance.
I just don't know what they're gonna draw yet.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm getting at.
The concern is that you can't have two front doors.
Right.
It, it, it's not supposed to look like a two-family.
It's gonna be a man door to go onto, there's gonna, there's already one car garage under this three-season porch right here. There's gonna be a man door there to enter that garage and this two-car garage, so it's more of a garage entrance door, it's not so much a living space door. So the front of the building is gonna be two stories high, the first story being man door, garage, garage, and then their living upstairs, so. I don't think it's really a front door, it's more of a garage entrance door, a man door, but I know that the Fire Department definitely wanted us another address on it, they wanted it to be three A to distinguish the, from the, from the.
Right, a clearly marked entrance.
Right. So that could go on that door, I'm guessing, I don't, you know.
So this door you're discussing, is that right next to where the existing garage door is?
Yes, exactly. So the existing garage door has a three-season porch above it, we gotta condition that space to get into that garage door. Right now, there's no man door.
Yep.
At that level of the, at the driveway, so I'm thinking about single-car garage, entrance door, and then two-car garage after that.
But I haven't seen that.
We don't have an elevation drawing, but I could certainly sketch something up real quick.
So this is the existing front door. He's gonna add two more bays to this?
Yes, and a man door. That's gonna be their primary entrance to go up those stairs into the, into the in-law addition.
There'll be another door, another door, and, and somewhere in that, a man door, pedestrian door.
Essentially, this, this three-season porch right here with the overhangs marked in the block land is gonna be a, a conditioned space, a common space.
Yeah, so that space and the deck are kind of shared.
Exactly, yeah.
We can approve this with, with conditions, being that there's no second front door on the front of the building. Do we wanna do that where it's, it is a garage door, it's on a second level? I mean, there'd be no problem doing it in any other construction other than the, the in-law.
What makes it not count as a second front door if it's on the front base of the building? How?
It's gonna be down here, right at this grade?
Right, it'd be on a second floor.
So it'd be at the second grade, kind of going into the garage.
Different levels.
So it would be like a garage.
It doesn't, it doesn't look like a two-family. It looks like a garage, you know.
Well, like, we have a two-car garage that has a door in the middle.
Because all it's really is, so that it doesn't look that way.
Right.
And I would say it doesn't.
Because of the two levels.
My opinion, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So you can have a second door on the face of the house as long as it doesn't appear to be a front, like a man.
Yeah, it's supposed to not appear that way.
If it doesn't like open into like a living space?
So to assure that the single-family character of the neighborhood will be maintained. That's.
All right, but there is something specific about that.
Oh, there is, yep.
I bought it that way.
That's the same thing on another house, same, same idea, with a extra front door.
Used to be, because I used to.
But it was on the same level, may allow it.
But it's not gonna be on the same level?
No, it's, it's, uh, it's definitely a garage entrance door.
I thought there was, too.
Which is typical, but normally they're on the right side, it's just that the gray drops off over there, and it's probably not ideal.
Here we go. Any new exterior entrance for the LAA shall be located to the side or rear of the, the single-family dwelling. Staircases serving as a second or third floor shall be enclosed. An interior doorway shall be provided between the LAA and the principal dwelling unit. I'm, I'm just a little bit concerned that we don't have all this.
We can hold them to the standards of that. I, I agree with you. I mean, we used to have to have an architecturally stamped plan that gave the exact square footage, and that kind of went away after a while.
Yeah.
So we can approve the envelope, and we can say, conforming to the zoning requirements, and it's there.
And it's on his.
Over to you.
It's on his plate.
Hold on, that's me, sure.
Yeah.
That's, that's something that we do view very tightly, is, is the two doors and what that door looks like as far as the single-family character of the neighborhood.
Right, right, and I have an agreement, too, that with two separate levels, you need two separate doors.
Yeah, I, I, I think that would look okay, but there's even more to this, you know, that says you have to have a door that goes into the other apartment, other house, and different things like that, that, of course, we can't judge by what you have here, or the stairs.
They may contradict each other, though.
So that's, that's something that you guys can approve with, with the conditions.
That it complies with the standards.
And if I see something that is a little bit fuzzy, we can also come back and just, and just put that back before the board.
Okay, I'm all right with that.
We're trying to build a two-family, that's not the goal, so.
No, not at all.
Well, I know, I know that, I realize that. We're trying to ensure that the town doesn't end up.
Yeah.
So I think, should I get there? Mark is gonna make the motion.
He'll be a mouthful.
Okay. The letters, I think we can. I think they're all in, it's, they're going in.
Okay.
Did we close the public hearing?
We have not.
The head map.
We have not.
Did you run the audit? Did you already?
Yeah, we can do it again if you want. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor or opposition to this application?
A motion to close the public hearing? I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
This was from the last.
Okay, I'll make a proposal to approve the special permit for Three Murray Hill Road to construct a thirty-two by twenty-eight LAA limited accessory and approving the thirty percent allowable and setbacks along with the letters and that the floor plan once established will be confirmed to be in compliance with the LAA requirements by the building inspector.
I think you need to mention the stairway as well.
Well, that's part of the requirements.
Yeah.
It's right.
Wasn't that in addition to the, uh?
No, it's right in.
It's written right in.
It's in the bylaw.
Yeah, it's right in the fire mix, yeah.
Will be enclosed.
Yep.
Okay?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck with it.
Thank you very much.
Be interesting to see what it looks like. Might as well just go to the fourteen Bradford Street, because that's it. Uh, we're gonna hear fourteen Bradford Street. Adriano Mendez for a special permit under one ninety-five eight E two to construct a new eight by forty-six foot covered porch and a second floor addition, which will include a garage expansion, living area, and will meet side setbacks, and will be over, and will meet side sex, and will be over the thirty percent allowable by right and any other relief that may be deemed necessary. Good evening.
Good evening.
Can I have your name and address for the record, please?
Um, Adriano Mendez, fourteen Bradford Road, North Chelmsford.
Thank you. I don't have so much trouble pulling the.
Oh, the porch, okay, so we are changing. The permit, changing the footprint.
What the hell do I have here?
You're gonna take them from it?
I, all I have is two applications.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't have.
Oh, the, um.
We don't have the drawing.
It's, I have it up there.
You got the application, application.
I'm sorry.
What you got on here?
Why bring things on another stick?
Pass it around.
This is due to the lemonade, I think.
Maybe I'll see one up close and personal.
Yeah, it would be nice to get a quick glimpse.
Yep.
Let's get close, I'm not contagious.
Oh, he doesn't have it yet.
I thought he handed it to you, sorry.
That was a nice farmerish porch.
Another farmer's porch?
A covered porch here.
So this is the addition?
Yep, those are existing.
Would you mind just showing us what you're, yeah, yeah?
Yeah, but, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm playing, sorry.
Thank you. Um, this, this is the existing house. Um, so I'm proposing, um, addition back, um, and this would be the front porch. Um, this is the existing garage and a storage on the back. Uh, so I'm proposing, uh, make a two-car garage and, uh, a storage area on the back of the garage.
It's twenty-seven, right?
Yep.
So you're making a garage like that?
So it's just really the thirty percent.
So.
Yeah, that's what it looks like.
Could you still maintain setbacks?
It's just two stories, that's all, it just matches up to the house.
It's just like an overhang on the back or something?
No.
Is that why it looks like it's?
Is that why it looks like it's.
It's already two stories, he's just, he just.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's just one story.
Extending the whole, he's making the whole house.
He's making it a two-story. You're gonna make it a two-story.
Make it a two-story, yes.
Adding a second.
So he's adding four feet out the back on the first floor, and then he's gonna extend the roof line over.
Go right over the top.
Oh, oh, yeah, it's a big project. That's what I thought.
It is.
But the, but he's not, mm, thirty, twenty-six, still meets all the setbacks.
And then, is this RB two?
I believe so.
Yes. So the.
Oh.
A thirty point two is fine.
Point four-three acre lot in RB zone, it's a small lot.
There it is right there.
Yep, twenty-six, sixty-six, thirty-three.
So we, we are doing a, a front yard variance.
Yeah.
No, it's alre, if you add the eight feet, it's still in the front setback.
He's at thirty, right?
No, he's coming at thirty, right?
Thirty point two.
Yeah.
Right, so it's supposed to be forty, so if you add the eight feet from where his front is, it's only at thirty-eight.
He's at thirty-eight.
It's already into the front setback.
He's already non-conforming in the front.
Yeah, he's just making more non-conforming.
Pre-existing non-conforming.
Yep.
So it makes a special permit. Okay. I'll read the letters.
See the plan?
There's a table up top right there. The fire department has submitted a letter requiring, uh, life safety equipment, and I'm gonna skip reading it in. The board of health has no comments regarding fourteen Bradford Street. The police have no comments regarding fourteen Bradford Street. The engineering notes, uh, are repetitive. The, uh, existing sewer service needs to be located, a road opening permit may be required, erosion crawl devices are required, and considerations should be made to install roof drain drywalls.
Mm.
Sean, do we, uh, should we be, so when we related to the letter, that sort of includes that caveat, and you would enforce our.
That's all done through plan review.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, but he's under forty thousand.
Yeah.
We got the audience, see if there's anyone that would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this application?
You can speak in favor. Just the wife.
We have the two kids in the house, we, we wanna decide if you guys approve, we stay in Chelmsford, that's where we like, would like to stay, or we gonna move to another city, and I wish we had a.
We'll just keep you right here, how's that?
Yeah.
Now you got a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, by David, all in favor?
The left hand.
So this is all new.
The lazy man's motion.
Yeah.
This is the house here.
This is the current garage. She's gonna take it back a little bit.
Colin, can you put up seventeen Bradford?
With the rears, she's actually gonna take it back here.
Seventeen Bradford?
But this is just gonna be a porch, it's not a building.
Yeah.
It's just an open porch.
And another, is that?
This is gonna be the overhang, but it's an overhang for the second story.
That's the building, okay.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we did drive out there to take a look at the neighborhood.
The back?
Yeah, this is the.
Now, there's gonna be, that'll be a two-story addition of the back.
To find seventeen Bradford.
Right.
Couple houses down.
So this is gonna hit the ground all the way?
Yeah.
Or this is the overhang from the two-story?
You can't, you can't accept.
I'm looking at it, I'm going to mouse it in like a porch.
Oh, is that four?
It's very much in character with.
Yeah, I'm sure, not, personally not that concerned.
Everything.
I noticed that.
I, I, I hear forty-six foot porch, and I immediately go take a ride, because it's, you think it's extremely large.
Yeah.
Opposed two-story addition.
It's very much in character with.
Is the first floor going to end here?
Sounds just like this.
No, this, this goes over the whole, the second, the first floor would end here, the second floor covers this entire parcel, plus this parcel.
Right.
The first floor ends here?
So this is there, so they're gonna take first, they're moving the first floor to here.
Correct.
So it's basically like you add the second story and then whatever that is.
Basically like you add the second story.
Covered porch.
Right, it was probably twenty-four, now it's thirty-four.
And the garage getting further back as well.
Right. It's a big addition.
Yeah, it's a big addition. Lots of space for all those little ones.
They're extending the first floor out backwards, they're just taking that whole wall down and moving it back.
Right.
And this is just the porch, they're not moving the front forward as well.
Porch.
Correct.
Okay.
It's just the porch.
So it'll come up on a small covered porch, and then it'll go to the garrison-style home that goes all the way back to this corner.
Where's reload?
It'll be a fun.
Fun project, yeah.
So even with the extension on the side, they still meet side setbacks?
Say it again?
They still meet all the side setbacks and everything?
They do, yeah.
Yes.
They just shorten, they just.
Almost two feet.
Increase their non-conforming front.
Yeah.
They're over on the building coverage.
Right, that's, that's the vote, basically.
Yeah, right. That is the vote.
This is where it fails.
Click on the Google.
Like a thirty percent.
Thirty percent. Are, are these two different, there's the thirty percent increase, and then there's also the fifteen percent maximum.
Coverage of the lot.
Yes.
Yeah.
So they're over on that and the thirty percent, so there's two things.
They are, or.
And then, it isn't, it, wasn't the frontage also, it's becoming more non-conforming, right, right, that's the third.
And the frontage, they're increasing their non-conforming.
We have three.
Both are special permits, it's point six percent.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
And then the thirty percent is killed, it's almost a hundred percent, if not more.
And what was the frontage thing, Mark?
They're increasing their non-conforming.
Their current.
Oh, for the front setback. Oh, okay, I thought you were talking like street frontage, it's like the lot isn't changing, right? Okay. All caught up here.
Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Oh, not that one.
Not that, yeah, they gotta vote.
Okay. One more minor detail.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit under one ninety-five dash eight E two, uh.
Fourteen Bradford Street?
Fourteen Bradford Street for the covered porch and the second floor addition, uh.
Regarding to the letters.
With regard to all the letters read in.
Just, uh.
I'll second the motion.
Fourteen Bradford, I think, I think he said it.
It's, uh, Bradford Road.
I can see it from there, okay.
Sorry. Yeah, it's Bradford Road.
Bradford Road, not Bradford Street.
Yeah.
Bradford Road.
Also, it's not Bradford Street.
Bradford Road.
That's Bradford Street, huh? Uh, is that, uh, was that advertised as Bradford Street, then was that a concern?
No, we don't have a Brad, it's only Bradford in town.
Just so easygoing sometimes. Whatever.
Okay, so for the record, we are unconcerned about the street versus road.
Pauline is unconcerned about that, I.
Yeah.
Eliminate.
Again. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit under one ninety-five eight dash eight E for fourteen Bradford Road to construct the covered porch and the second floor addition, the letters read into the record based on the stamp plan submitted.
I second.
Okay, Jamie gets it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck with it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Special permit for that whole.
Did you find it?
Yes, thanks.
That's gonna be special pervariance.
I'm gonna take it right down.
Well, speaking of which.
That's crazy.
I have a motion to reopen the public hearing for.
Three sixty-one.
I motion to.
Three sixty-one Littleton Road?
I motion, said motion to reopen the public hearing for three sixty-one Littleton Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Chairman, when we left, I went back to my office, I printed out the prior variance that was issued on August twenty-ninth of eighty-eight, which had all the required findings back then for the creation of these small lots, so the variance back then. And I've come up with several reasons why there's hardship, I think you only need any one of them, and I think then you'll be satisfied, I hope. Because it sounds like the board was inclined to grant the variance if it had one, any one valid basis for a hardship. And the following I submitted would be a hardship. One, the A and R plan that's already been approved and recorded, I believe, if you don't grant the variance, it means that the ability for the person who owns this house could only sell to a cash buyer, because a bank would not be permitted, generally speaking, to grant a loan on a property that's technically not compliant. So you, you render the marketability of the lot down to a cash buyer only, that's a hardship. Second hardship is that the current owner of lot B would be continuing to pay taxes on the ten thousand square feet of land that he's never been using, and the garage he's paying the taxes on, because the garage is located on his property, even though it's always been historically used and by lot A. So that's another hardship, because he's, again, simply because of, of the allocation of who uses the garage and where it's located. And the third basis for a hardship, if that relief isn't granted, there's a possibility that you would be required to, to get this property to be marketable again for financing purposes, the garage would have to be completely moved or raised. So any one of those three is a hardship, and I respectfully submit that you adopt any one of those three reasons to support a grant for a variance.
Where do they list the variance hardship?
I know, I was looking for that earlier.
It's in, it's in the mass general laws, and it's, it's related to land, I can pull it up.
Yeah. I thought, listen, Kyle's shape, could you pull it up?
I looked, I looked under Title Six, chapter forty, section six of forty, I didn't see it there, so.
Putting structures on here. So do we, can we, do we have a discussion about whether we could just appeal the original, I mean, modify the original variance, or?
Oh, just, just.
I think it's safer, because I've given you the variance approach, and I've given you three good reasons, I think, for hardship.
Do we figure out?
I do, too. Yeah.
That any one of those will suffice. And I might add, the other uniqueness of all this is that it abuts a forty-B, it abuts a commercial property, and it has a, an interstate, a state road in the front, it's, that's what makes it unique as well, in addition to the uniqueness of its size and shape. So there's a number, we had all, and it doesn't substantially derogate from the intent of the bylaw, the uses stay the same. So we've satisfied the criteria for a variance.
Yeah, safety.
Jim Keery, oh my god.
Yeah, nineteen eighty-eight.
And no Eileen, I didn't know she wasn't on it since time began. So you'd prefer the variance route as opposed to the, uh?
And I think I've given you, for your record now, all the requirements.
Find that variance, it's topography, lot shape, and, uh.
Soil conditions.
Soil conditions. The lot shape is affected, as I said, because of the tax payments, the way, not shape, but the, the structure of the approved A and R plan leaves a person who doesn't get the benefit of using the garage, but gets the right to pay for it. That's a hardship.
Those are financial hardships.
Well, it's a literal enforcement.
Literal enforcement of, it's a literal enforcement of the zoning bylaw, that's what we're talking about here.
Right, so this is a little, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or bylaw would involve substantial hardship.
Substantial hardship.
Financial or other.
Financial or otherwise.
So that's also allowed.
We, we can take that as testimony and, and evidence.
And we could do a variance to supersede what is written when it says not.
Every, same weak mannered.
Anything you grant is at odds with what's in that bu, in that book.
This board can do, that's why it's an important.
That's, that's what we do. Everything, if it's in the book and it was right, you don't.
Yeah, we, I wouldn't have to be here.
Right.
My clients would love that, I wouldn't have to be here.
Embrace your power. Only for good.
I'm not trying to make you jump through hoops, we're just trying to get it right.
No, we just have to have a record that can stand up.
They wanna have something that's gonna stand up in court, if it's ever challenged.
And be reasonable.
That's all, completely understand.
We totally understand the, what you're trying to do, but we wanna make sure we can, uh, put a good record to.
Is the board satisfied at this point?
Yep, and I think on the financial side, you can definitely do that. You know, with the garage being always with A.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean? It's always been there, B's been paying the taxes on it, so it makes sense to, I think you could do it easily based on that, I think.
I, I think when the property is, at some point in the future, many years on, resold, it'll be sold as a smaller parcel, still be an RB, it will not be sold with the garage, and the person that's going to buy it will have the objectivity to see the garage, it's there, it, it doesn't really affect the, the lot that we're making smaller, I think.
Is there any separation between the house and the garage? Between parcel B, the remainder of parcel B and the garage, is there like a tree line or anything?
Yes. I don't think there's a tree line, no, it's, it's clear, is it?
I'm sorry?
Between the, the smaller, what would be the smaller lot and the garage?
I didn't, I didn't think so.
Smaller house and the garage.
There are any, there are tree lines, there's no tree line, clear land between.
No, no.
No, between the house on Littleton Road.
And the garage.
And the garage. It's, 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 it's rear yard.
Yeah.
It's all families.
They're families.
Yeah.
Anybody that buys it can put up a sign.
Yeah, or trees, or whatever, yeah, if they don't wanna look at the garage, yeah.
Okay.
I guess I accept a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I second the motion.
Second by Jamie, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance under one ninety-five dash nine for three sixty-one Littleton Road. With the, were there any letters read, I have a little. With regards to letters read in.
You read the letters in, there were no comments.
Yeah.
To all the letters read in, uh, with the hardships as defined as a financial.
I think we need to define it, huh?
Financial and the marketability of the lot.
I'd say, yeah, I'd say based on the fact the garage is substantially used as parcel A, you know, uh, lot, and would relieve parcel, the new parcel B from that tax burden.
I think.
So I, I'd do something along that way.
So you have to say.
I think if you use the, the statement in here that, um, the literal enforcement, and I could put this right in the decision,
Yeah, right, well, it needs to be.
the literal enforcement would cause a, a, um.
Undo financial hardship.
A serious financial hardship.
Yeah, I'll start over.
Does that sound okay?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for three sixty-one Littleton Road. Where does it say that? I don't, well, because the literal enforcement of the, uh, code
Turn it in here.
would cause a.
Substantial financial hardship.
Substantial financial hardship.
With regard to the letters.
And with regard to the letters read into the record.
I second the motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
It took a while, but.
Earned you dinner tonight.
And points for driving back to your office to print stuff out.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm glad it worked, that's, that's all it cares for them, Mike.
Just glad you had a full tag to get there, Brian.
You really wanna go there, Brian? Soon as you're done with the meeting, I'm happy to talk about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I appreciate all your efforts, by the way, very much.
Good luck with it.
I appreciate all your efforts, by the way, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna get through those minutes, too?
Did you see my email on the minutes?
I got some changes from Steve that I did incorporate, um, on the May minutes, where I, at the very end where I had me as a closing or adjourned twice, and.
Was the deck size twenty-one by twenty-four or was it twenty-four, but I thought it was.
He wanted twenty-four by twenty-four, you were correct.
Twenty by twenty-four.
Okay.
So I fixed that.
Okay.
Can I vote on the minutes if I wasn't here for those days, right, I can't vote on the minutes, right, I didn't think so.
That's why I didn't say anything. I actually.
Take care.
Have a good night.
Take care, Sean.
So Steve, Aaron, Steve or Aaron would have to make the motion on the May meetings.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the May minutes with the corrections I submitted.
I second the motion, I have to second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you need a, we don't need a super majority for minutes.
Who was it, Phil?
No, no, simple majority of whoever's here, and then Aaron cannot vote on this one and neither can Jamie.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve the June sixth meetings as submitted.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Simple majority.
So.
You've got one.
Yeah, I think we got a new book today, the book's sitting. Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Alright.
Meeting is closed.
Oh, yes, don't forget to sign these regulatory meetings, I need.